Just since this is my first occasion. I'm going to call the meeting to order. I'm sure it's free to come to the place here. And since Karen Magennis, not here yet, it's a few minutes. So is Karen Tessier. I'm going to go ahead and begin the meeting on order. Are there any conflicts that we need to seek to address before we start? If not, we'll first item in the agenda is public comments. So this is your opportunity. Any public comment?
Oh, sure. Just one. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Community grants and on all these different grants and all. What I'd like to find out is the funding part. How can these contracts be put out so they're not political? And that the contracts be laid out in a way that every contract is the same information, regardless of what you're doing at whatever site, so that it's fair to everyone. And I don't know what the contracts might look at right now, but the same information be on the same contract so that one can't say the other one is getting a better deal or something. I think that's a concern that I have there. And in this particular one where we're at today, if you smell the smell that I smell, it needs carpet and it certainly needs improving. So I'd certainly advocate today for some carpet in here. So if you got any extra money, do that for them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good point. Any other further comment?
Yeah, Mr. Greg. I'm Nancy Nielsen. I serve on the County Land Conservation Board, which works very closely with Parks and Recreation. But I also am a member of the Riverdale Arts Safari. And much like the gentleman who just spoke, I would like to see that very quickly in the future, the rest of the county is included in the dispersion of funds for grants for art organizations outside of Asheville. This county supports a great number of artists. And the Riverdale Arts Safari, which is now its 12th year, has made Riverdale a place on the map here in Buckham County. And we think that our artists and our organizations should be able to have an opportunity to give us grants. We've obviously incorporated it as a five A1 C program. And we have about 110 numbers.
You too? Okay, hearing none. Any, should we look at the orders here? We've got the minutes. I guess we've been going through the minutes. Are there any, these have been distributed prior to the meeting. Are there any additions, corrections to the minutes? Motion to the first. Motion. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to Cassie's. Is the community fund, the committee prepared to report or do we need to wait?
Prepared.
Prepared. Okay.
Okay, so myself, Mr. Tessier, and Mr. Johnson, we've met with staff. Of course, he does always a fantastic job of explaining these. So I think that in order to help everybody on the board and to help maybe the visitors that are here, I'm going to have Steve just give us a short overview of the Buckham County Community Grants, which is the, mine's got notes on it, which is these, the blue page. I think it'd be good of him to know, you know, what that includes, how that's done. And we, so, and then after that, I'll summarize very briefly, you know, what we, what we look at.
We want to thank the community members as well. Mr. Johnson, Miss Tessier, your great work there. And we had a very productive meeting. We basically went through just a process of understanding historically how the grants came about. Starting with the paper that you have, it has circles on it. The point of view this is a description kind of defines exactly what's going on within the county. The commissioners, basically, there's funding they have, a total amount of funding to utilize. Community Funding Grant, the Community Recreation Grant Foundation.
Now, why don't you come over this side and look forward to me. I'm leaving my stuff all the way inside.
The, I think in the interest of time, I'm not going to go into a whole lot of detail about these two. The Community Funding Grant is, and the Foundation Funding Grant, were originally part of, one part of funding is Community Funding Grant Program. And my understanding is that the commissioners are going to be working on that and defining protocol and the process for that. So what we dealt with was the Community Recreation Grant. This program's been around for a quarter of a while, it's about $42,750. And it's, money's already defined in the budget. The difference between this grant program and the other two, besides the small funding, it's many more toward defining eligibility for funding projects that are within the cultural recreation and library program of what we would hope to see funded in the community. But also too, the program, this is in this current fiscal year, this money's already calculated within our budget. And it's actually just for a six month period. So we're right now in the throes of trying to get the applications going and getting approval from the board to move forward. And we have, we're always allowed in here. Because we aren't doing it.
We're in the library now.
Yeah, we've been, we've been set up.
About ten to be a mob or two, so I'll try to be clear. The Community Recreation Grant though, if you look at the next page, this really defines your timeline. We are recommended, and we recommend to that city. And hopefully they'll endorse today to the board. But this defines the process that we'll go through, your dates, your timeframes, how we move forward. Cultural Recreation Authority, Community Recreation Grant.
Just a note, between the third arrow and the fourth arrow, the green arrow is typically where the commissioners would be brought into that to review before the letters go out. Once the, is that right? Is that right? Once the recommendations are made, and they go to the commissioner for review, and then after that, the rest of that.
Well, actually, now, these are, mine's already set aside in the budget.
Yes.
So for this particular funding, we wouldn't.
It doesn't have to go.
Yeah, I was thinking of the Community Development Grant.
That one definitely. And also too, what we're trying to hit on are looking at grants that support the community in ways that we can define that are culturally relevant, define health wellness within the community. And we looked at all the documents, we appreciated this committee again, they took time to look through all the various documents we're putting out there, including the application and the process rules and procedures. And we came away with a few minor modifications. Other than that, I think we're ready to go. So I'm totally available and will answer any questions you might have.
I think to Gary's, Gary's point about the applications and what we try to do, and Mr. Johnson, if I miss something, you know, but what we try to do is to make the application easier, more available in different ways, not just online, but other ways. We didn't want it to be intimidating, because we didn't want the smallest of, we didn't want people to have a small need, you know, to think that they did not have access to computer, or we wanted them to be able to bring the application whatever way that we could.
I think Ms. Tessier brought up a good point. She also indicated that they had a question relating to how they saw that this benefited the community.
Right.
We have a lot of good questions in there, but just at the core, how is this benefiting citizens within the community?
Okay. Any questions?
Any other comments? Thank you.
Do we need to act to accept this timeline and recommendation?
I'll make the motion that we accept the timeline and recommendation, committee.
Okay, second.
Second.
Let's go. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say aye. Motion to carry it. Worst actions. Man row. Okay. Where's my agenda? We're moving along here. It's going to be pretty difficult. Okay, property and procedures for naming county-owned properties and facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make that report. It's against my nature to speak this loud in the library. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to be framed otherwise, but today I'm going to break all the rules and speak up so you can hear me. I hope that in the next, in the next meeting or meeting in February, so January, February, we will be bringing to you the opportunity to accept the name for a facility that we've been working on for about two years through Parks, Recreation, and Recreation out in South Asheville. Working on a piece of property that was bought with, partially with Parks and Recreation Trust Fund dollars. We've been about to finish up Trailhead. So as we get closer to that and finishing up the work to get that park open in the next six months to a year, we'll have the opportunity to name that particular facility. What I brought to you today was the county commissioners' approved policy for naming a park or a facility or building after a family or an individual. And I want to make sure all of you had a chance to look at that. So you'll see that when we bring you this resolution, hopefully for your approval in January and February, that upon your approval, we would take it to the commissioners for their adoption, their application. So this is the piece of property that was worked with the family out in South Buckham named Collier. And I hope you'll have a chance, it was on your list of parks. I hope you'll have a chance to find it and go look at it. And then we'll have a formal resolution for you to follow the commissioners' procedure for naming a piece of property, and specifically this park. In January and February, it's the most exciting. We've been waiting for this for a while. I'm so excited I'll be able to bring this to y'all.
Great. So would it be possible just to send an email to the members of the board on the location of this so that we could, you know, little jolt, a little reminder to go see it?
Absolutely, I'd be glad to.
Thank you.
Yes, it is. Up above the Brooklyn Golf Course, up to the mountain, along the power line that's across the mountain from Lake Julian and, it's about a, almost, I think almost two miles of trails that this family has been maintaining for a number of years. And we're awfully thrilled that they will let us work with them to preserve that piece of property for the community that we're hiking.
So that was on our agenda before, did I?
With the part of funds, yes.
Yeah.
And to work on that trailhead, yes, sir.
Right, right, I remember. Thank you.
Okay. So we don't need to take any action, this is going to happen in the change of light. All right. Any other issues?
I think we're done.
Okay. Ed, there's nothing to be done with this, other than just to know that it's here, right? This is what we did at the last meeting, final copy.
That's true. That's just the corrected or edited copy of what we did last night. So that just goes in your binder.
The next thing on our agenda is a tour of the library and the here for architect Keith. Are you going to?
I'll leave that off. Tour is an overstatement. You can see it from where you're sitting. That part's easy. And that's also part of the problem that we want to bring, bring your attention to today. First, I'd like to introduce the young lady standing behind the books. This is Alexa Duncan. She's the head of this branch.
Hi, Wood. Nice to meet you.
And Alexa's staff is standing over behind the desk. I'll let her tell you who they are.
Well, the two gentlemen that you can see on the left, Malcolm has the glasses. He is one of our full-time staff here. He does a lot of our repairs and is a music expert. Michael is here two days a week helping us manage the chaos. And Christine, who is also behind the desk, is our children's librarian. And she's wonderful. We have story time actually right where you're sitting every Wednesday and Saturday. And then we also have two pages that help us put books away that are not here.
And Alexa's been at this branch three, five years. She started as the children's librarian here and has been the branch head now for about two years. So we're very happy with what she's done with the branch. She's a great program, and that is one of the things that makes this branch tick, is the number and the quality of the programs. I'll give you a quick history lesson of why we're here before we bring Keith into the discussion. This branch is, dates to 1965. And it was the third branch built by the city of Asheville. Pack Library was on Pack Square, where the Asheville Art Museum is right now. And in the early 1950s, the city did launch into building branch libraries. The first one was in West Asheville, then they built one in North Asheville, then they built this one, and then they built one in Oakley. All of them are kind of unique in that they were a combination of city fire department, library, and recreation centers. And that's a concept that over the last fifty-some years has proven out pretty well. We're still running in two of them. This one and the one in Oakley are essentially in their original unaltered facilities. This one dates to 65, Oakley dates to 1970. This building is still owned by the city of Asheville. So in effect, the county's library, we're squatters here and have been since the city and the county reached an agreement to trade responsibility for library funding back in the early 1980s. So we've worked with the city since roughly 1983 here, and essentially, we share expense and maintenance on this part of the building. None of this is documented. It is all strictly handshake agreements that were made at the time. So we have no lease and we pay no rent. We just take care of our part of the building. This branch is now the most overstressed branch in the library system. We do about 114,000 circulations a year out of this branch. And to put that in perspective, the North Asheville branch is the busiest, West Asheville and the South Buckham branch where we were at a last meeting are usually tied for that second and third position. This branch is always full. And it's a significantly busier facility than say Black Mountain or Weaverville, which are much larger and more up-to-date buildings. The main thing that's been driving us in looking at what to do here with East Asheville is first, not messing anything up. This is the single best branch location that we have, bar none. It was beautifully sighted in 1965. The proximity to City Park here, there's a City Park just down the street. Neighborhoods, Haw Creek on this side, Beverly Hills on the other side. It's on the bus line, it's walkable. Pretty much everything you would look at for circumstances for locating a branch library today are still here. So we've been looking at options on this, for this particular branch, for about the last five years. We've looked at buying additional property. We even put an option on a piece of property up closer to the VA Hospital. That fell through. We've looked at several other parcels that have been available around here. But everything comes back to probably our best option is to stay here and try to work with this site. And work with the city on improving the library and the recreation center that's on the other side. I'm going to let Keith, and Keith Andre has worked with the library on at least seven projects that we've done since the late 1990s. He's also the architect, did courthouse addition. So he's done a lot of work for Buckham County. But I'll let him talk a little bit about what makes this site special and what some of the options might be. And so take it away, Keith.
Thanks, Ed. And I took a few minutes. It's been a while since we've talked about this, but I brought along the floor plan for the building. And obviously, everybody knows this building here, so I will remind you, in our conversations, this building over there is a mirror, it's just this same structure, the footprint, the bookshelves and the book stacks. So Ed and I, as we originally started this conversation, we discussed how the site works with vehicular circulation coming through and the relationship with the other uses here. And so what happens with, from an aerial perspective, is you limit it on parking. And that's a great thing. People want to be here, they want to be in this vicinity, but now with our world as it is, we all seem to tend to drive to get there. So we talked about a couple of things. I think trying to think about the fact that this old architecture, which in my mind makes me think of Asheville because of Six Associates and Tony Lord and Stuart Rogers and those six associate architects, they kind of have this mountain style that reminds me of home. And you look at that in plan and you realize that they beautifully placed the building and then all this structure, natural light, just fits really well for a library and a branch, as Ed said. So what's lacking here is just the vehicular storage or parking aspect of it. So I took something that we looked at last year and threw the sketch down on top of this area, and it showed you that a couple of things probably would help. And the idea of getting 18, 20 cars on the site, it's pretty obvious where that can happen. There's a little property available out here along the road too that we discussed. So if that in fact is something that could happen, we discussed the idea of making a flip. That's one big space over there, and so one possibility was to do the renovation across the way while you still stay in operation here. And I think we came to the realization, and that's probably pretty smart, if we can pull that off. The structure in the building itself, as you can see, needs updating, but in general, there's not a whole lot, I think either one of us, would change about the architecture. So I think if we, you know, walk softly and be smart about the resources to get the building up to code and get it insulated and workable again, then you've got two options, to renovate either side or apply identically. And then the final thing was the additional square footage that could be, and believe it or not, this courtyard out here is set up and could be roofed over in a kind of key space. The short story is that I think we saw possibilities on site with the two identical footprints and possibly expanding on that a bit or having the idea of some expansion. We're accomplishing, I think, the vehicular issue as well as the square footage issue, and then trying to work with what's here and be kind of general about it, honestly.
I think the, you're looking in the library side, you've got roughly 3,500 square feet. The branch that we were in last month is 8,000 square feet. And 8,000 has been what we've been trying to build toward as an objective in our newer buildings. What I think we could possibly do here is get between a combination of a small expansion on the other end of the building. In other words, this building's twin. We would center the two buildings by enclosing the courtyard. And I encourage you to, we'll go out that way and look around. And in effect, make that the center of the buildings. So you would enter there, the staff functions would be there, the restrooms would be in that space. So then you could either go to the library on your right, and on the, or excuse me, library would then be on your left, and then the community space would be over here. Since this property is still owned entirely by the city of Asheville, everything we do is going to have to be negotiated with them and what their priorities are. And we've had several conversations over the last two years. They're supportive of the expansion. The fire department is fine, they have no desire to expand. The city recreation program has been going through a lot of changes lately. They have given a lease to LEAF, the Lake Eden Arts Festival, for office space in the recreation side, which is why we're meeting over here and not meeting over in what is the meeting space that exists. So all of that will have to be discussed and worked out, and you know, our priorities are going to have to be reconciled. But the value in this particular site, I think, is so high that we need to pursue that as the first option. And that we only back away from this location if it's just clear we're not going to be able to get what we need here. Another thing we've been thinking about in the library is simply what do we need to build in the future? Because the building that we were in last month at South Buckham was designed two years ago. I think we can build less square footage now and still have an effective branch. So I'm thinking that we can get somewhere around the 5,000 square foot level, in effect doubling what we have, we'll have a facility that'll be worthwhile for many years to come. Because the book storage element of libraries is what's changing. Every item that you're looking at on the shelves in here is not permanent. They're all going to be rotated out of the collection sooner or later. And in some cases, that lifespan is only two or three years before it expires. So the storage needs are going down. It's the scene, it's the computer space, and it's the program space that we're building for this neighborhood. So that's essentially where we are, is we want to reopen the discussions with the city and see if we can come up with an agreement to come back and say, this is what we're going to do. And then if that fails, then we go out and we start looking for real stuff.
Do you have, is there a formula for how much computer space can be extended?
There is a standard that's the North Carolina Library Association put out, but it's over a dozen years old. It's not meaningful now.
Yeah, I was saying that to what Matt was talking about a couple meetings ago.
Because this building, like all the libraries, now has wireless capability.
Right.
So a lot of our computer users come in with their own equipment. So we're not seeing an increase in demand for people coming in and using our computers. So what we have in this branch, I believe, is five. This needs probably about seven or eight. So it's not a huge increase just in that. But they're all piled up on each. In fact, everything in this building is cramped, to the point where it's uncomfortable.
What is your courtyard giving you, Ed? If you expand into your courtyard, how much square footage does that get you?
I haven't measured it all. About a thousand?
Two thousand.
Two thousand square feet.
So you'll get, you'll. I think you should have 4,500 if you had that.
And we think we can get a small addition on that end. In other words, if this building's twin, there's room there for at least maybe, I don't know, 500 square feet probably.
Would you extend the length?
Yeah, it would essentially extend the length. Because there is room on that end, there's no room on this end. So we think it could be done reasonably efficiently. And probably where Keith and I have a real bond on this particular building, this is a Tony Lord building, and he's one of the most significant architects who worked in western North Carolina. And as Keith said, this is a beautiful building. It fits. There's something about it. Tony Lord also did the Black Mountain Library. So you'll see some similarities between that building and this building.
How many square feet is Black Mountain?
Black Mountain now is up a little over seven with the addition that we put on a couple of years ago. Yeah, that figure actually is predates, we put a small addition on.
You're looking at the Rock, the city, I'm going to say that Matt.
Okay, we appreciate it. Robert Simmons, who's the city recreation director, has been our main point of contact and has been great to work with.
How many, at least, at least, does it have?
I do not know. I know that they are in there rent-free in return for providing some programming for the city. So that's. But that in essence is what, this is for the library as far as our capital improvements, this is the big need right now. There are other projects on our list further out, but this one has waited a long time. And this branch keeps getting busy. And this branch keeps getting busier and busier, because there's been a lot of infill development in this neighborhood in the last fifteen years.
But the architecture, are we ever going up?
The only way you could really go up is to tear down. Because unless a building is made to take a second floor from the beginning, you really can't do that. And we're hoping we don't have to tear any of this down.
Is there a role for this branch to be sort of a prototype for your smaller footprint and sort of drive innovation because you have to here, and that might be used in other branches?
I think it could be, we did a smaller branch that opened about ten years ago in the Lester community. That one's a little over 5,000 square feet. And so far, has performed very well. But it does half of the volume of business that this one does. It's really taking care of people that were after here, because the branch is almost always full. It's just every seat taken.
Could you show David real quick, so he knows what you're, just give him the overview about flipping, what you were talking about.
Because it's a mere image, and here's a building on the east side, similar footprint, Ed and I kind of beat around the idea that the library could actually renovate over there first, move in over there, and then expand towards the middle and this side. The other issue, so that was, I thought that left what we have here alone, and it needs to be, energy-wise and other things, but secondly, then the other challenge was getting vehicle parking on site. So that kind of lends itself towards that east side, and we could get about eighteen, twenty spaces over there, maybe more. But that, I think, would be very helpful, and that could be accomplished. And I did talk to the city about the, you know, the CBD, I believe, and not, not CBD, community business. And there were no issues with additional parking.
And then your entrance comes in the middle?
Yeah.
Which are administrative and everything, and bathrooms and stuff would be in the middle. So you can imagine how much space that would, how much more efficient that would be.
So the phones are basically here, it's just a matter of kind of, the building on top of it.
So once the square footage is figured out, and I think that that makes a lot of sense to Keith, what you've done there, what is the process of figuring out what goes on the interior of this new branch? As far as preparing for the future of library?
Well, one thing where this branch, where this branch is good now, when you look at it, and it's even more clear when you look over on the other side and see the community center space, there are no walls. So essentially, everything in here is furniture. So even the shelving is terribly easily movable. So in essence, what you try to build is you build the empty box, knowing that you can shift it and change it as time goes on. So as far as what you have to put into it from the get-go, where this building's gonna come up short now, is you need the electrical capacity, the lighting, basically the things to bring it up to code. But this was done right, to begin with, which is one of the reasons we want to stay here. There's not a lot we have to undo. And where architects sometimes go off track, and librarians go off track, is they define spaces with walls, and that's something we, if you avoid that, you could come in and in two weeks, change it all, which we did in Weaverville early last year. We did a complete internal rearrangement of that building in two weeks, and it looks quite different.
And is that based on needs now versus ten years ago when you thought so?
Yeah. And it's a matter of, in all the tall cases now, where we're increasing seating space, and to some extent, at the expense of bookstabs' space. This branch, small as it is, has a collection of about 38,000 volumes. A big branch like South Buncombe, that'd be 47, 48,000 volumes. Not that much difference in the size of the collection.
Is there some formula for going forward, like what percentage would be online versus just the actual?
Yeah, and really, that is changing pretty much year to year. The big thing, for example, since Alexa's been here, she did a major pass through the entire collection, and created a lot of room on the shelves. The reference collection, what we all used to use after school, going in and several sets of encyclopedias, and Reader's Guide to Periodicals and so forth, all that's gone. That's been replaced by online resources already. But what you're seeing is book circulation, print circulation out of the branch libraries in holding state, and children's circulation is growing. So it's not like the paper book is going to last.
No, I was wondering if you would increase the usage if you get the report online as well, it's not being away, but...
I think you'll, that is going to increase, the online usage will increase naturally. And a lot of that, the advantage there is it can be done from home. You don't even necessarily have to come to the library to use it.
Well, I'm saying more people who don't have access at home use that library.
Yes. And increasingly, they're coming in with their own devices and using all the wireless. Again, that's seating space. They need a seat, and they need a place to plug in.
Is there a drive-through phenomenon, like there has been in fast foods and pharmacy books, all that business?
There are a few libraries that have drive-up windows, branch libraries. I did one years ago in King, North Carolina, because we renovated a bank, and it already had a drive-through window. So you could call, and we would actually have your books ready there and pass them out the window. But it's uncommon. Drive-through book returns, yes, people love that. The better book returning can provide a happier memory of being back. But as far as just drive-up and pick-up service, that's kind of weird.
How does that, you know, does that affect in King, your parking required? Did it have any effect, did it reduce it or not?
No, and it, well, it would have certainly reduced it, but we had a gorgeous parking lot. It was an old Wachovia bank, so it was very similar to the building that sold up. For a little while, there was plenty, there was no parking stores there.
I'm curious, I'm curious, I'm curious.
All the money was still at the later...
Right, yeah.
The garden.
Yeah. Pull on the power, it's out.
But we already, that's definitely did that last week, we were partying. That's what they do.
We've done everything, I guess we did the tour virtually.
Well, we, you know, we'll be happy after adjournment to walking through the other side. We'll be showing some of the switches. We've been pretty much, one of the few tours you're ever gonna be on where you're not gonna be seen.
Any questions? Sorry, it's a little, I've got it for, any questions after, yes. The needs, it's been well versed in the needs, and now we see it's...
Kind of like, as you know, the starting conversation with the city in regards to looking at that, and I volunteered, Matt and I, if they need help.
Good. There may be some things fall out of that that can... All right.
I think you've done a really good job in, of course, that's your job, but, in trying to stay on this space, and I understand why you're trying to do that. You certainly don't want to lose it, that circulation is amazing, so certainly don't want to lose it.
Yeah, and it's what, what Joe was saying is the single most important thing. For example, the Oakley branch was built five years after this one, same basic fire department, rec center layout. It doesn't do, it does a little over a third of the circulation of this branch, and the difference is the location. It's by Oakley School, it's a congested area to begin with, and it just doesn't have the traffic. You put a branch library similar to where you'd locate retail, you want to be where people go. And you want to be where they live. And this meets all those tests. But if you do it wrong, the consequences are pretty evident, and the next one after this is done wrong.
I think I see the demographics around the combination of these things, but is there, are there death warrants to have in the fire station?
Alexa, I'll let you straight to that, because I don't live there.
We love having a fire station next door. It's great for programming. We've often had firefighters come over and show the children, give them basic fire education, what to do if there's a house fire. And honestly, we all feel much more secure with them there, for some reason. They come over and check out books, and they just seem to be a calming, reassuring influence.
Any other questions, Robert? Thank you, thanks for hosting us here today. Are any other comments or good thoughts? I think next meeting is scheduled for January 14. I think we'll have Dr. Green talk about the finances. Appreciate Mr. Hardrot, who has just been phenomenal to a lot of facilities under cost, under budget, and just really appreciate your work, Mark, I can't keep... All right, any other items of business?
I'm curious when the facilities committee is going to meet.
Whether a hard have to come in?
I've got one, I'll bring you one.
See? Unless we're waiting on?
Well, I've got one.
That's not mine. Well, there's, let's talk about this.
We do have something to talk about, yes. Would you want to set one up before the holidays?
Since I was a, can somebody define this committee and what they're, what they're...
It's not just facilities in the full sense of maintaining facilities, it's including future facilities.
Okay, right.
And we'll look at the list, the issues.
Right, okay.
How about we just do that right after the first of the year? I think where we would probably start with that process would be back to that list that's in your notebooks of the old county capital projects list that has all the blue lines, and talk a little bit more in depth about, you know, beyond the two we've already talked about the last two meetings, as to why those are there. And then, you know, all both Fran and I have a lot of facilities concerns while we're here, so. So we'll set one up right after the first of the year?
Yeah. How does making everybody feel about...
Is that, that's...
No, that's a three-year.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Of January?
Seven.
I think that committee has four on it, doesn't it?
Yes.
We do not have a commission deal, or do on the set?
We do, but it's a two-foot.
That's all.
The ninth I can do early, we're working out to be a normal deal.
I can work that out.
I can do an eight.
Eight, four.
Is that okay?
What time have you, where have you made, can I think?
Um, have you ever seen...
Very much.
Yeah, we can make the question up. Was that good?
We'll get the neighbors out.
Very good. Any other meetings we want to set up and talk about? Let's see, we'll be meeting back after, on the 14th, I guess.
Yes, we are gonna need to go to pack for the 14th meeting of the county attorney room is not available for that. But we're gonna need the projections, so we'll come on the...
Mayor Park? Okay, any other business? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
No, thank you.
Process of our legislature, e-discussion, I'm losing favor, say aye. All of those, no? You have two hundred and seven hours. Thank you.